Thank you and good evening, everybody. Welcome to this Milton Select Board meeting of Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can't believe we're looking at September in just a few weeks. On July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. This act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and introductions of the members of Select Board and staff who are in attendance, some of the Doyle serving this year as Chair of your Select Board.
Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Karen Bradley, Member.
Roxanne Musto, Member.
Thank you. And Paige?
Paige Appolito, ATA HR Director.
Lynn.
Natalie, Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
Thank you for being with us tonight, Paige. Interim Town Administrator Emery Fagan is unable to do so, as is the case with Member Wells. At this time, could members of the Select Board please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, our next agenda item is public comment. And just a reminder that approximately fifteen minutes is set aside for public comment. And each person wishing to participate has up to three minutes for their public comment. So let's see if we have any hands raised for public comment this evening. We have three hands raised. I'll take them in the order in which they appear on the screen. The first is C. L. Christensen. Dr. Christensen, you're recognized.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Christensen. I live at fifty-nine Collumor Street here in Milton. I attended yesterday's Select Board Diversity and Equity Committee meeting, and I want to talk about something that was said there. The committee members said that there is a quote "perception problem" in Milton as to how committee members committee membership is populated. That phrase, "the resident's perception," was repeated over and over again during the committee's discussion. I want to tell you that it may be perception to some, but it is reality for many, including me. Blackballing is targeted, frequently implemented practice and strategy used in Milton Town government. It is not a resident's problem. It is not their perception. It is reality. Back in two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and sixteen, when I was the town's Logan CAC representative, several government officials set me up for public embarrassment and shunning at a Board of Selectmen open meeting. I was a dedicated volunteer. The Board of Selectmen later apologized, and residents of the town rallied behind me, which I greatly appreciated. And I let their act of cruelty towards a volunteer become water under the bridge as I continued to give the residents of Milton hours of work per week and generously shared my knowledge and expertise about Milton's aviation problems with all who wanted the information. What happened to me back in two thousand and fifteen was not a problem with my perception. It was reality. I've applied to be on the ANAC. I applied back in early June. I didn't get a response or acknowledgement of my application for weeks. And although I am more qualified than anyone else in town to help residents of Milton with his aviation problems, I've been blackballed from that committee. This is not a problem with my perception. It is the truth. Labeling the cronyism and vindictiveness that pollutes our ability to have a fair, friendly, and honest town government is a problem with residents' quote "perception" is a slap in the face to those of us who have been overlooked or ostracized by Milton Town government. If you truly want to fix Milton's diversity and equity problems on its appointed committees, first identify the problems for what they are, a reality, a problem with Milton's town government, not a problem with its residents' perceptions.
Thank you very much. Second hand is Mr. Philip Johanning. Mrs. Johanning, you're recognized.
I want to, hi, I'm Bill Johanning, twenty-three Parkway Drive in Milton. I want to follow on with what Cindy said. I applied for ANAC myself. Unlike Cindy, my application was recognized. And I was assured that my application would be passed on to the Chair for vetting. The thing I don't understand is that no current member was vetted by the Chair because until the last meeting, there was no Chair. So I'm not quite sure I understand what this vetting step is or why I would be the one who needed to be vetted rather than any other member of the committee. So I think, you know, the problem really isn't diversity. The problem is point of view. It appears to me that if you don't have the point of view that is, let's say, commonly held by the Select Board or other, let's say, more powerful boards in town, then you're really not ever going to be picked. The same people are picked again and again for committees because their points of view have been vetted, and those people hold the right point of view. I guess I'm concerned about ANAC because there really is no member from East Milton. I am from East Milton. The airplanes fly right over my house. I believe I have a right to speak for East Milton, and I believe that I'm qualified to speak for East Milton. I have been on all of the grassroots committees in a leadership role since two thousand and thirteen. I worked for American Airlines for the majority of my career. I was in maintenance and engineering. I was in ground services. And I was the controller, the onsite controller in Sao Paulo, Brazil, and Mexico City, Mexico. So I am very familiar with airlines, the workings of airlines. I'm very concerned and committed to the noise issue. And I don't understand why there would be no members of the committee from East Milton where ninety percent of the arriving traffic flies. So I think there is a diversity problem. I think the diversity is diversity of point of view. But I guess I would also say, being a senior citizen, being openly gay, I believe that I have two boxes checked that are not present on the committee today. So if you want to consider point of view, I represent East Milton. If you want to consider diversity quote unquote, I'm openly gay and I'm a senior citizen. So whatever box you want, I feel I'm qualified. And I'm not sure what this game is to talk about diversity, but then not walk that line. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our third speaker is Crystal Diaz, and I hope I pronounced your surname correctly. Crystal, you are recognized.
Hi, thank you. It's actually Diaz. My comment really was a question about this portion, you know, to make a to have a comment to make after some other issues are brought up. That was my first thing. But hearing the first two questions, it's nice to hear that someone is pointing out the cronyism that is taking place in our town. And I have bear witness as of late as to sort of inner workings within the town government that doesn't seem to be brought to the residents or the communities to which their changes and decisions are impacting. So, you know, kudos to the other two people to spotlight, the blackballing and the lack of diversity, whether it's gay, black, brown, female. You know, it seems to be all the faces I see are either white or male or relatively young. So it would be a nice change to have some representation for our town, for people that are actually in and having to live and deal with the changes that are being made in the dark.
Thank you very kindly. And our next speaker is John David Corey. John David, you're recognized.
Thank you very much for taking me. I was the fourth person with my hand up. But John David Corey, fourteen fifty-two Canton Avenue. I grew up in Milton, moved, since moved, but back in Milton. And I just wanted to thank Member Bradley for her kind of bold comments regarding traffic calming in the town of Milton. And I'm back in town after basically a twenty-year hiatus. And I have, I love the town, but I've been very disappointed and scared to see the amount of traffic coming through our town. And we can talk about so many things, schools, and you could make the list and go a mile long. But if we don't have our own, if we don't have neighborhoods where kids can walk around or bicycle or go to the store, we don't have a town. And I think that traffic calming items need to be a regional item, but we can't wholly think about it as a regional problem. We need to take it by the horns and pick D, all the above. It needs to be a full-on attack to bring these neighborhoods back. Poor, I mean, I'm on Upper Canton Avenue, and I'm very fortunate because I'm not right on the road, but my neighbors are, and I sympathize with them. They are just completely under attack with the cars and the speeding. And sometimes I'm down there watering the plants or whatever, and I see bicycles going by, and they look at me like and I, they brave the streets to be out there. And I think that the town needs to put money into their own budget and work with this traffic commission, give them some teeth, and we need to make some changes. And I think that there are many changes that can be temporary in nature, different signage, certain spot enforcement. We can use, we can add crosswalks or simple bump outs in way where you can just use some ballards. But we need to attack it. I mean, when's the last time you've cut through Cambridge? They used to have a major problem too, but they have fought for the last twenty years to just push off those cars. And now you try to cut through Cambridge, and I don't, it's booby trapped. So I'll let you go because I think I'm probably over my three minutes, but please continue focusing on this. It is, it will bring our town back. And it's gonna take some, it's gonna take a little bit of pain at the pump, but I think that we can do it. And so that's it. But thank you very much for listening, and I see Member Bradley. So hopefully she can be our advocate in calming our streets. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll be moving on to executive session. And as we do, I want to mention that in the past, we've had some citizens who had difficulty when we've gone into executive session, coming back into the Zoom public meeting. So staff have been working on an alternate approach. And today, this evening, we will try to go into another platform for executive session after the Select Board votes on doing so and then return to the Zoom platform with the hope that nobody has been disenfranchised from the meeting. Of course, when we return from executive session, we'll be going into public session, as said. The first item for executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A, Subsection two, is discussion strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new town administrator, Nicholas Moreno. Hey, Moreno, excuse me, my throat. I will read the motions to make it easy for everybody. I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the new town administrator pursuant based upon, I'll strike that word pursuant in the future, Lynn, based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, after this and all of the other executive session motions, we will return to open session. Is there a second on the motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Roll call vote, seeing no hands, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Member Bradley?
Yes.
Member Musto?
Yes.
And Chair Doyle, yes. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Subsection A, six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of the Kidder Branch Library located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of the Kidder Branch Library, one oh one Blue Hills Parkway, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. Is there a second, please?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm recusing myself from that discussion.
Thank you. And we will contact you, Ms. Musto, to return when we get to the next item on the agenda from executive session. Appreciate that.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Seeing no hands for a call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Ms. Musto, I should call you in the role.
Of abstain?
Of abstain, correct, for the record. Appreciate that very, very much. Item number six is the East Milton Library. We will defer this to a subsequent meeting, so there is no motion needed there. So we'll go to item number seven, which is executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A, Subsection three, discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the conditions of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the conditions of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass, based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. Is there a second on this motion, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Seeing no hands, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number eight on our agenda. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-two, approval of meeting minutes, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, May third, two thousand and twenty-two, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, June one, two thousand and twenty-two, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I will note that in the absence of Mr. Wells, I do not believe we will be entertaining the minutes for April sixth and April thirteenth as we will not have a forum for those two items. So I move to enter into executive session to approve executive session meeting minutes based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. And again, as mentioned earlier, we will be returning into open session. Is there a second on the motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Comment, Mr. Zulus?
Was this the vote?
Yes, sir. It's been moved and seconded?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. I think that takes care of our motions so that we are now prepared to go into executive session. Hopefully, our technology will operate adequately. Lynn's all smiles. Lynn, did I miss anything that we should be sharing with people other than the fact that if they are on Zoom and participating among the Select Board members, they will want to turn off the video and go unmute?
I think you got it all covered, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, let us try it. Okay, let us try it.
Thank you and welcome back to open session. We have adjourned from executive session and we will entertain executive session. Just before we conclude the meeting for one item of business. At this time, we're on agenda item number nine, which is this discussion approval employment contract between Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator in the town of Milton. We have pretty well concluded as a select board what it is that we intend to offer. And should we have a motion to approve the offer? For communication to Mr. Milano, Mr. Zillas.
Mr. Chair, since this is still an executive session item, I think this should be deferred.
We are out of executive.
Right, but the substance of it is still a matter of discussion, so I think this should be deferred.
Kevin.
Mike, I path here, I do need to make a. The negotiations, the negotiation on board has reached some consensus and we're going to continue the negotiations. I don't think go back into executive session on the item.
Agreed. Do we need a motion? We can just continue our work. So we will defer item number nine. We'll defer item number 10 because we're going to go back into executive session. On that, just before the meeting, item 11, discussion approval, primary election warrant Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 rather, and we should have with us our town clerk. Don't see her at this. Did she be promoted? Then do you find her?
I promoted her.
Good, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Town Clerk, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Thank you for inviting me and allowing me to come before you folks.
Thank you for being with us, Sue. We're on agenda item 11, which is this discussion approval of the primary election warrant. The Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. The floor is yours.
Okay, so as you folks know, we are gearing up for the September primary, which is going to be conducted on September 6th. Just a little background information, on June 22nd, Governor Baker signed into chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, a Votes Act. And there's a few items that are now going to be permanent that we all became familiar with during the 2020 election. First and foremost, early voting by mail will be permitted for all elections, state, federal primaries going forward. The other is that early voting in person again will be a permanent fixture for all elections for state, federal, and primaries. Town elections, I think I will be asking to meet with you folks probably after the November and September election to get a feel as to what we might want to do for our local elections. We will be having the early voting sessions. They will start in August 27th. And they will run through September 2nd. The Monday through Friday hours will be our normal business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Monday through Thursday and 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 on Friday. And then the Saturday, the 27th, we will have it from 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. That's also the last day for voters to register to vote. For those that aren't, they can either do it in person or they can do it online. All of this information is available on my website for those that choose to read it. So I think I summed up most of what I wanted to talk about with the election.
Well done. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions for Ms. Galvin? Seeing none, somebody move the approval of the primary election warrant then?
I can do that. I moved to approve the primary election warrant for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022.
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zillas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number 12. Stay tuned soon. Discussion will fall town meeting and establish warrant closing date. And we have Mr. His joining us for this. Welcome, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Chair Doyle. Glad to be here.
Madam Clerk, may we return to you for the introduction of this item.
Yes, so historically, since early voting in person has come to light, I have asked the select board to consider postponing the annual fall elections because the date, the 4th Monday in October, coincides with early voting in person. And it's an extremely busy time period in my office. And to juggle those two very important roles is very difficult. So I am here to ask again if, if the select board is going to call a fall town meeting, if they could consider having it after the November 8th election.
Any comments from select board members? Any response to questions from town clerk? Mr. Zillas, you're recognized.
So Sue, would the next week work in November? You didn't want to get too close to Thanksgiving, but.
Right, so the next week is when all the reporting is done to the state. I have, you know, very stringent requirements as to when everything has to get back to the state. So it would be again tough, but you know, again, that's your call.
Well, when's the next good date after that for you? Next good week for you after the.
It would more than likely be, let's see, the 27th, the 21st, the week of the 21st.
And Thanksgiving is the 24th.
Okay. I wasn't thinking of Thanksgiving, I'm sorry. Hopefully, none of you were planning on coming to my house because obviously, I'm not thinking about it.
Mr. His, do you have some thoughts on this that you'd like to share?
I believe in prior years, we picked the first Thursday in December, sorry, the first Monday in December, so the 5th or the 12th, for example. I believe in 2018 or 19, we picked the first Monday in December for a special.
Mr. Zillas, sure.
In the past, that's allowed us to do the budget reconciliation prior to the date, which I think is in late December, so. See, I mean, if we can do the first Monday in December, then I guess that, I guess I'd be in favor of that.
The Warren Committee will have just received their budgets, so they're probably not in their busy budget season, for example. So I, for example, a December meeting for them is better than a February meeting for them when they're in their busy season.
Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm fine with whatever folks want to do. I just would like to ask you to make sure that you'll have the other select board members present because I will be in exams and I'm not really sure what that schedule looks like yet. So just to make sure that Secretary Wells will also be in attendance for all those so that we have a forum. I'm fine with not being there. It's okay. I just don't want to hold up any hiccups in case my not being there would make it so that the select board didn't have a forum. That's it.
Thank you. Duly noted. So do we see that we have a consensus for Monday, December 5th? We'll start there. I see nodding in the affirmative, so. One of our objectives, and the second is to set the date to close the war. Mr. Moderator, based upon your past experience, what would your recommendation be?
I think end of January is the traditional date. Although in this past year, I think the Warren Committee received budgets a little later than usual. They may have come in end of December, early January. So if we think the town administrator who will probably be new in their role and the school committee can hit the December 1 deadline to produce budgets, then I think closing warrant end of January makes sense. If you think because of your transition of town administrators, that could be problematic. Providing a little leeway to Feb. 15 might help them.
Mr. Zillas.
So I think we're, I think we're talking about closing the warrant for our December 5th town meeting, which would require us really to kind of count backwards in days and printing schedules. So I'm not sure if we're in a position to, to determine that date right now because we'd have to figure out what the printing day is. So maybe, maybe we can, we can pencil in the December 5th date and then, and then come back on the warrant closing date.
Okay, Ms. Bradley, I assume that's the point that you were going to raise as well.
100% Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So with that said, and seeing no hands raised for comment, do we want to have a motion to approve the date that we have decided upon at this point? And then establish thereafter the date to close the warrant for a December meeting? Mr. Zillas.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Monday, December 5th is the date for the fall town, fall town meeting. Late, late fall town meeting.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zillas.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number 13. This is a discussion, this discussion approval request to amend chapter 2, section 7 and 8 of the general bylaws regarding town meeting motions to move the previous question. Mr. His could be, turn to you for this, please.
Yes, just for the citizens at home, this was submitted by a town meeting member, I believe as a citizen's, potentially citizen petitions or a motion to come before the select board and the Warren Committee. So just some background, Milton's current bylaws actually prevent the, a couple of things like tabling motions and what town meeting time would refer to as move the previous question, which is ending debate and moving right to a vote. Instead, what we do is we limit it to each member being able to speak once and limit debate per speaker to five minutes. My thoughts on this are, I would be, I would recommend against this for a few reasons. One, I'm generally opposed to more rules in town meeting. It encumbers future moderators to both remember them, apply them, interpret them. And I think, you know, when we're back in an in-person town meeting, moderators can often read the room and apply some judgment. The rules limit that. Second, the representative town meeting we have is different than an open town meeting where they do have this kind of rule. In an open, you've got a lot of citizens, sometimes thousands will come. They're unused to debate. And members can run on and on and on and on. They may not have time limits. In representative town meeting, we have people who are familiar with the process. They come on a regular basis. And again, if we're limiting the debate and people aren't speaking, every person we limit is representing another 30 citizens who aren't there. So if you limit the debate to three people, you're living, you know, cutting out the voice of potentially 240 people. There are members that might be holding back, you know, wondering if they should speak, shy about doing so and ready to go step up. You could be potentially shutting the door on them. We already have the rule that limits people to speaking two times on a motion. And limit overall to 10 minutes. So that's kind of our excessive debate limit. Third, I think Zoom has simplified the process for people to speak more frequently than we used to see in person. As we go back to in-person town meeting, I think we'll see less of that. I've also looked at the data, most speakers speak less than three minutes. It's the rare individual that goes over. It's usually the formal presentation, someone with PowerPoint and PDF and they've prepared some extensive remarks. But most people speak pretty briefly, 30-second questions, maybe a three-second speech. And lastly, I fear that this concept of limiting debate kind of accelerates the potential for rubber stamp vote. Like, why keep talking about this? Let's just vote already. Versus getting the chance for the member to ask the question of the, of an elected official or one of the department heads. So I would think fewer rules are better and I would not be in favor of adopting this in Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Discussion questions by members of the select board. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious who's bringing this to our, our meeting this evening? Is it the moderator? Is it a citizen's petition? How is this in front of us this evening?
This came to us from a town meeting member from precinct four for an information item, a discussion. And the moderator was kind enough to join us to do so.
And if I may ask, do we have to take a stance on this this evening or can this just be more of an informal conversation? I'm just, I'm not really sure about what the rules are here.
More the latter unless members of the board wish to do otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Zillas? You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think if I, if I recall the outreach from the town meeting member, they were looking to see if the select board would move forward on this or if they may move forward with a citizen's petition. So they were looking to see if the select board would be interested in sponsoring an article along these lines. And if not, then perhaps they could, they could act by citizen's petition, so. So I, I don't disagree with Aaron that, that, you know, I think, I think if we take a couple of weeks to think about it and think about moderator's comments, I still think that probably gives the citizens plenty of time to put together a citizen's petition. Citizen petition for special town meeting, for fall town meeting, I think takes 50 signatures rather than 10. Or maybe it's more than the 10 signatures for the annual town meeting. So I, so we probably want to get back to the town meeting member sooner rather than later. But I think two weeks would probably be okay. It's just my, my guess.
I think that's fair. They have some time to incubate this since it's recently come to the attention of the select board. Of course, we thank the town meeting member for bringing it to our attention. So Mr. Zillas and Ms. Bradley, I hear a suggestion that we defer any further discussion until the August 23rd meeting at the earliest. I see assent on that and I, it does not strike me that it would be appropriate for the select board to take a position on a citizen's petition. We in agreement on that? Thank you. Any other further comments? This time, we'll move on to agenda item 14. This time we'll move on to agenda item 14. And this is discussion and vote to designate the Milton Chief of Police or his designate to continue to assign police officers at polling locations during all elections to pursue into Section 72 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022 Election Reform Law. So Madam Clerk, we return to you. And we thank Mr. Hiss for having been with us for the meeting.
Yes, so the reason why I put this before the board is it's, again, as a result of the Votes Act. In the past, the police chief worked with myself and designated a member of his staff and we had police officers at each one of the polling locations. As a result of the new legislation, they decided to have it that it was in the control of the select board to appoint the officers in the polling locations. An alternative was to have the select board appoint the police chief to continue in his role of appointing officers as he knows the schedules and everything and that was why I submitted the request.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if I recall correctly, Chief King has concurred with this as I saw in writing.
Correct.
Any questions for Madam Clerk? Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
I'll make the, yeah, I'll make the motion to designate the Milton Chief of Police or his or her designate to continue to assign police officers at polling locations during all elections pursuant to Section 72 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022 Election Reform Law.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, full call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Madam Clerk, you have a trifecta.
Yeah, thank you very much for your patience and tolerance of me being here.
Oh, we're very pleased that you were able to join us.
Thank you.
Business for the town of Milton and its citizens.
Well, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
You too.
Agenda item number 15, discussion update, East Milton Deck Project. And we have DPW Director Chase Berkeley with us. And again, little apologies for the gravelly voice. Allergies season must be returning. The weather's changing. That has to be it. So Chase, welcome. And thank you for being with us for two items. This first one, the East Milton Deck Project update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, members of the board, for having me here tonight. So yeah, no surprise, there's been a flurry of activity down at the Mass DOT East Milton Square Deck Project. The perimeter area of the project is essentially complete, meaning the sidewalks along the outside perimeter of the park. Most of the landscaping is also complete. There's a, a series of street trees that will be planted on Granite Ave in front of the businesses. Those still need to show up. They're not on site yet, but that, that will happen shortly as well. But the focus is certainly in the middle of the park now and it's turned very green this week. There's a number of shrubs and trees that have been delivered and are actively being planted. And also that the 350th clock was installed yesterday. It's been in storage for 10 years since they were first purchased. The other ones over at Elliott and Central Avenue. So that's a big milestone to see that clock go up for the committee. Did so much work to raise the funds because those clocks are not cheap. So I'm sure they're, they're very happy to see that go up. Outside of that, all of the traffic signal equipment is installed now. It, the, the system that is adaptive is still not configured yet. They still need to run some fiber optic lines and establish internet connection and things like that. And then it will become truly adaptive, meaning it will adjust with the volume of traffic and optimize traffic flow. So it's better than it has been during construction, but it, it's, it's still intended to get even better. So there's a little silver lining there. Probably the most significant part of the project right now is the, there's an issue with the top coat of the pavement that went down. So you likely noticed that it was, the area was paved and then they began line striping and then abruptly stopped. And that's because there was an issue with the top layer of asphalt. And if you go down and look at it, you'll see that the liquid is actually rising to the surface and it looks like a smooth finish. And so the Mass DOT engineers from both District 6 and their pavement specialists are reviewing the conditions right now to ensure that, it's essentially will have to be removed and repaved. So there'll be milling and paving again in, in the entire scope of the layout of the project to remove that upper asphalt layer and then repave it. It's a painful thing, but the town's going to inherit these roads. So we want to make sure that they're 100% satisfactory when we take them over. So we're still waiting for the schedule, but I'm told it will likely be mid to, to late August that that will happen. So to push before the Labor Day holiday certainly because things get much busier down there. And then I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention that our department at DPW is doing in the periphery of the project. So we're in the planning stages to pave the remainder of Granite Avenue from where this project leaves off at Bassett Street down to Squonam Street. So it'll be the area in front of the Fruit Center and then up to the, the, where the jurisdiction changes from Milton to Mass DOT near Squonam Street. So we've got that in the planning stages for the fall. And we're also going to be constructing some new wheelchair ramps on Adams and Church Street in front of Stella's to get those compliant because they're all outdated and they don't meet the ADA standards, the modern standards, which are, it's since the entire project has brought everything up to code, we thought it would be prudent to, to do a little bit beyond the project to, to make it harmonious. And then one other change that the DPW will be doing is the little section of Edge Hill Road beside the post office will turn from parking on both sides of the street to reverse angle parking. And we're just waiting basically for the, that work activity to finish up and for the contractor to remove their own storage and equipment out of the way. And we'll do that. It can help to implement that change. That will allow vehicles taking that corner to stay on the left side of the road and make that curve a little softer as you come around from the post office up onto Edge Hill. And as far as the pergola, so that's a project that we're managing internally at DPW. That's in a, a phase right now where the construction documents are being drafted and I should have some new rendering. So they, they took the feedback when Alveson came to your meeting a while ago and made a new visual concept which I can send to members of the board and would be happy to post that online too for the public. And basically merged the two concepts together. I believe this board came up with that idea. It was a good one. And it looks pretty good. So I'll get that out to you so you can take a look. And then we, we still need to establish the remaining construction funding for that pergola as well. It's a couple ideas floating. We've received two earmarks through the state budget, which pays for about half of it. So we're just going to come up with that other half and source that out. And that's all I had on the, the project, but I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Are there any questions or any comments? Yes, Ms. Busto, you recognize?
Thank you. Hi, Chase. Just a question about the pergola in terms of will people be able to weigh in on these two, like on that final design? Some of the residents around East Milton?
Yes, we could certainly put it up for public comment if you'd like to. At some point, we need to draw the line in the sand and, and
Right.
design the documents for it. But if you'd like a period of public comment, that's something we can do.
I think a short period would be good, you know, just so people see what's going to go there in case they've missed any of our conversations.
Sure, yeah, happy to do that if that's, if that's the will of the board. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Busto. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to drill down on this thing about the asphalt. I think it's important for us to get out the word in every, in any way possible that, that the asphalt that was put down is bad asphalt. They made a mistake. Okay, people make mistakes. And so now they need to rip everything up and do it again. And we need to let people know that that's what's happened as, as best we can and to tell them when they're going to fix it. Because this is going to create a lot of consternation among residents and people who traverse that area. So we just, I, I, my point is we just need to get the word out. We need to really tell people what happened. Put down, not, not the town, but it was DOT and, and their people put down bad asphalt. Now they need to rip it up and redo it. And so and, and they're going to do it on such and such dates. So I think it's important to, to make sure that that word gets out.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I should add that several of us, I shouldn't say several, Mr. Zulus and I joined with Mr. Berkeley and as Department of Transportation personnel a week ago, this past Monday to review the traffic signalization, the road markings that are planned and so on down the line. Want to thank you, Chase, and everybody involved for that good block of time to review everything and to see them accepting of ideas that were presented. Anything else for the deck? Mr. Zulus?
Yep, Mr. Chair, just elaborate, just very briefly, you know, as you know, a lot of the conversation had to do with that, the lane collapsing right in front of the fire department.
Fire station.
And ha, fire station and, and having better signalization and better signage and road lanes to make the roadists, motorists aware that, you know, it's going to be three lanes coming into two and then coming into one. And so what we're told was that they're going to work on some additional signalization and signage and the chair had some great ideas that I think they were accepting of. The other thing we talked about was that bump out in front of the post offices. And again, the answer that, that they had was better signage, better lines on the streets so people can figure it out better. And so, so that was a lot of the discussion we have. And, and, and as you say, they were very accepting to, to the very good ideas that I, I think the chair had to, to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. I'll just add that I was in the square for an additional hour, hour and a half meeting with people and I, I never, since I've moved back to East Milton in the past 20, 22 years, had so many positive comments about the deck and the pedestrian walkability of the East Milton Square area. People were by overwhelming comments, very, very positive. And I think the addition of the ramps for people with disabilities that you mentioned is going to be a very welcomed enhancement as well. So we thank you and all involved for that. And please communicate that to others, if you would, Mr. Berkeley. Ms. Bradley, I'll do it nice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say to Mr. Berkeley and to all involved, I do see that the traffic is flowing easier with the traffic signals. I think that it is easier to get through the square. And personally, I have driven around that post office with a truck right next to me. And if you go slow, you can make that corner. And I am all in favor of bump outs and having people slow down, take a breath, look at the scenery around you and actually make that turn. And it is possible with a truck next to you. And so I just want to say thank you very much. I live on a street with a lot of bump outs. So I'm used to them and it's something we all have to get used to. But I understand it is something that we've got a lot of pushback on. But really, it makes it much more safer for those with disabilities, for the kids that are biking over to East Milton so they can spend their hard-earned lawn mowing money over in our, our shop. So I just want to say thank you. It really has made a difference.
One of the comments that was made, speaking of the post office, is that people noted that there has been more foot traffic to and from the post office recently with these improvements in the, than in the last quarter century. And one of the police officers who was attending to traffic at that time, who was in the discussion, confirmed that that's what he's been hearing as well. So that's, that's very welcome news. So at this point, let us move on to item number 16, which is
Mr. Chair, if I could just go ahead. I just wanted to say, we're, we're essentially in the top of the eighth inning on this project. So we're very close, but there are still some improvements to happen and there will be, you know, the opening up of the park, which will allow, allow pedestrians to flow through the middle of it, which will greatly improve that pedestrian connectivity you mentioned.
Thank you very much. Item number 16, discussion approval, fiscal year 23 water and sewer rates. And Mr. Berkeley, we return to you and to James Aiken of Woodward and Current.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And there should be actually one more person from Woodward and Current, Mr. John Himlin. If you'll lend if you see him. I think he's going to join us as well. So the firm, Woodward and Current has been doing the town's water and sewer rate analysis for over a decade now. And essentially this year is the same process we follow annually where we take the appropriation past the town meeting and we design water and sewer rates to essentially break even with that appropriation. So we want to raise exactly the amount of money that we are appropriated to spend and not any more or less. And so they use a computerized rate model and they look at previous year's consumption to do that. Our biggest costs on, on both the water and sewer are MWA assessments. So it's about 50% in the water and about 75% in, in the sewer. So their rate increase directly impacts our rate increase. This year, we were fortunate that we did not need to increase as much as the MWA increased our assessment because of consumption trends. So that's a good thing. We went up about 3.1% from the MWA, but we didn't need to raise our own rates as high despite. And just speaking of the MWA, it, it is, you know, it's a hot topic right now with the drought and the water, water conservation efforts all around us. But we are very fortunate to be on the MWA system and not have any restrictions on our water use and not have to implement watering bans or fines or any of that stuff that you see very common in the news, you know, city and towns that are about us and are all around us. So you know, there's a bit of a premium to be an MWA customer, but along with that comes very reliable and plentiful system. So I, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Aiken at this time, just to walk through his report that you should have a copy of in your packet. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have after that.
Thanks for having me tonight. Basically, the, the summary of their report is that you're, I reviewed your water and sewer expenses. The water expenses for the year increased about 3.4% and sewer expenses went up 5% for the year. And like Chase said, that was primarily from the MWRA assessment. There was also some small increases in, in personnel costs and on the sewer side, there was any debt service expense. I also reviewed your usage for the year and it was about a 10% decrease in water usage in 2022 compared to 2021. But when we looked at the average over the past three years and looked at your overall expenses that you were projecting for FY '23, we recommend a 2.5% increase on the water rates and a 1, 1.1% increase on the sewer rates. And I'd be happy to go into any more detail that you have about the package or answer any questions about it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
It's great to have both of you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, so what we typically do is post that rate report on the town website following hopefully an approval tonight for the viewing public to take a look at it. And they can certainly reach out to the DPW if there's any questions.
Mr. Aiken, is there anything that your colleague might want to add or you both all set?
I'm all set.
All set. Thank you. So we'll turn to the select board for questions and comments, please. Mr. Zulus, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to highlight what I think is the headline here. And, and, and Chase and, and the Mr. Aiken, Mr. Himlin can, can let me know if I'm wrong about this. And that is that an average family of four is going to see an average water and sewer rate increase of 1.6%.
Correct.
Lower volume users are going to see a 1.8% increase. And higher volume users are going to see a 1.6% increase.
That's correct.
Is that kind of the headline here?
I would, yes, I would say so. For an average family of four, typically usage is about 90,000 gallons a year. And that account would see about a $10 increase per quarter.
So forty dollars over the year.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any other comments? Mr. Berkeley, anything that you would like to add beyond what's been stated at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we're good on my end. Thank you.
Okay. Then seeing no further questions, we have a motion to approve the FY twenty-three water and sewer rates. Do we have someone to make that motion? Ms. Busta, thank you. Is there a second, please?
So I can, should I read the motion?
Yes.
That we're going to move to approve the FY twenty-three water and sewer rates.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor by roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busta?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, gentlemen, one and all, for your being with us and for your thorough presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
For having us.
Item number seventeen, and thank you, Roxanne, for catching me up on that.
No problem.
Discussion update approval, reopening of the Milton Teen Center Wildcat Den at the First Congregational Church and related contract. Mr. Zulus, may we turn to you, please?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think I saw that we have, I think Margaret Carrolls is here. And if she is, maybe she'd want to.
She is.
Because she can give us more information. But I think that the good news is that because of the good work of Ms. Carrolls and our Parks and Rec Department and Kevin Crissom, that we're moving forward in reopening the Wildcat Den, which was closed, which was open in January two thousand twenty and then was closed in March of two thousand twenty with the onset of COVID. We had a contract with the First Congregational Church back in two thousand nineteen to pay costs, monthly costs associated with the running, which were calculated at the time to be three hundred and forty dollars a month. And so I think what we're going to be proposing to the church is exactly the same agreement. The agreement was for three years, so it'll term out this fall and really didn't get much of a benefit of it. But I think what we're going to be proposing or suggesting is the same contract for three years. And we may need to have some discussion about, with them, about the costs because they may have been, they may be less, they may be more. But it seems to me that there was an escalator in that contract for five percent a year on the three forty. So it seems to me we need to have some discussion with them on that. So for this, it's Parks and Rec that runs the, is running the teen center of the Wildcat Den. But it's this board that is going to enter into the agreement with the church to lease the space. So that's what we'll have to take action on when it's, when it's ready to go after we've, we've got the agreement with the, with the church.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. And welcome, Ms. Carrolls. Would you like to comment?
Sure, thank you very much. For those of you who don't know, Margaret Carrolls, and I'm with the Milton Coalition. And we've been moderating the situation with the Wildcat Den since it closed and through COVID. Always checking back in with First Congregational, who we are very, very grateful for, for their allowing us to use their wonderful space down in the basement that they put together. And they are, they've been letting us use it. The Milton Coalition has been using it weekly with our teen coalition. And everyone is ready to get this open for the middle schoolers again. And I took the initiative and talked to Kevin Crissom, Will Adamsick, who is very interested in having that space open. The library gets a lot of use from teens and their numbers have been going up lately. So, and they're also interested in collaborating with the teen center to provide programming that kind of is run through their teen program. We talked to Officer Chris Potts to get his take on what's going on with middle schoolers this year. Talked to Principal Fish, who is very, very much in favor of this opening up again. He says people ask him almost every week what's going on with the, with the Wildcat Den. Caroline Consella and Paige has been very useful in getting the word out about the position because that's, that's really the last step here is to hire somebody. So we worked on an updated job description and it's out in the world. And hopefully, we're, we're getting some results. Paige is shaking her head. So thanks, everybody, for your support. And hopefully, we can get it open like second week in September. Any questions or anything? I see Kevin here, too. He can answer questions as well.
Thank you and welcome, Kevin.
Thank you for having me.
Any comments that you would like to make on this particular agenda item?
Yeah, so we, we are looking forward to having this open. Been a long time. And we do currently have two interviews for the job coming up in August and hopefully more to come. And thank you to everyone for getting the word out there about this job position being open.
Mr. Zulus, what would be your pleasure at this particular, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradley, you're recognized. You, I'm you, Ms. Bradley.
I'm really sorry, Mr. Chair.
I do it all the time.
I just texted with our attorney, Kevin Freitag. I'm a member of that church, of the church where the Wildcat Den is housed. So I need to recuse myself from this. That's why I turned off my screen, just so you guys all know. But I have, anyways, that's why. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Appreciate it. Back to you, Mr. Zulus.
So, Mr. Chair, it sounds like all the pieces are moving in the, in the right direction. And, you know, our only role here is to enter into the lease. And so my suggestion is, my understanding is that Reverend RG Wilson Lyons is on vacation this week. And so my suggestion is that we, we either, one of us or Mr. Freitag, reach out to him with the proposed agreement and have a discussion about the costs. And so we have a lease agreement teed up and ready for this board to approve, hopefully, two weeks from tonight or two weeks from yesterday, the twenty-third, should be our next meeting, which will, if we do that, that would be, that would leave us in certainly in a position to have the, have it, have it opened in early September.
Thank you very much. And we all know how, what this is to the age group that it's serving. Extremely valuable contribution to the community and to these young men and women. Mr. Zulus?
And just to add, not only the middle schoolers, but the, but the, what we provided for also was the possibility for Friday and Saturday evenings for high school-aged events. So, so that possibility. So what we, what we had before was Monday through Thursday, two to six, for the middle schoolers. And then Friday and Saturday nights, as agreed between the church and the town, for the potential for high school, high school events.
Reminds one of canteen that used to be held at Cunningham Park, for those who may be old enough to remember those days. Great activity, important activities. Thank you, one and all. So we will defer this item to the agenda for August twenty-third in the hope that everything will be finalized of what we contract. Item number eighteen is a discussion update on the Lower Guile Field reconstruction. And Mr. Crissom, could we lead off with you, please?
Yes, thank you for having me. So last summer, we did a feasibility study through Capitol for the Lower Guile project. And it was determined that we could move forward to construct a turf field there. Then again, presented again to Capitol Committee and passed and also passed through town meeting. We have hired Chris Huntress Associates, who is with me here tonight, to take on the project. Currently, we've had one neighborhood meeting so far at the site regarding the project. And currently, there, on our monthly park meetings, the project is on the agenda to be discussed every, every month. And Chris is here with myself, like I said, and we're here to answer any question.
Hey, did Chris want to make any comments at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm just really here to answer any questions that you may have, but happy to help.
Thank you very much. Catherine, Burke, you expressed a considerable interest in this particular project. And we thank you, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And we recognize you for your comments.
I'm going to need some other people to be made participants in this. Can we bring on Paul Makashima? And Catherine Simpson?
And Liz Overark.
And Liz Overark, please. And is it okay if I share my screen?
Please, if you would.
And everybody can see that? Yes?
Yes.
All right. Kathy, would you like to begin?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank you all for having us here today and for listening to our concerns about the Guile Field reconstruction project. I would say we've kept this presentation as short as we possibly could. And any one of us would be happy to talk more in depth about really any point following. So we represent neighbors from the Pine Tree Brook area and a hundred and twenty signatories of a petition, which we'll be adding to and forwarding to the select board in the near future. Okay, the next slide, please. So as our town continues to welcome new families, it's critical for Milton to have more spaces that can accommodate a greater amount of practice time and gameplay for Milton youth. And so, yes, our town's kids need and deserve more practice and playing time for youth sports. We also need to work together to ensure that our fields are best suited for the town's needs, particularly the needs of our kids. We need to consider the health and safety of the kids in the neighborhoods. And so, yes, we need to use our town's resources as effectively as possible. But we don't believe that artificial plastic turf is a good solution. Next slide, please. So here you can see, this is the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood. The proposed field, which is roughly outlined in yellow, directly abuts wetlands. And it's in a densely populated part of town that's the most diverse in Milton, with homes as close as three hundred feet away. As currently written, the proposal includes athletic lighting that mimics daylight, a four-foot chain link fence, fifteen-foot ball nets and seating for hundreds. During a community walkthrough, one town official admitted he wouldn't want this in his neighborhood. The area is already home to two chrome rubber artificial fields, which are marked here in red and surrounded by fence and padlocked. It's in a densely populated part of town, as I said, which is the most diverse in Milton, with homes as close as three hundred feet away. With an additional artificial field proposed for the area, residents are raising questions about environmental justice. Why toxic plastic-covered fields here? Why so much of this neighborhood's natural green space covered with plastic? Next slide, please. So here's some drone footage. And if, just clip on it, yeah. Showing exactly how close the field is to abutting homes. I don't think people realize that on the other side of those trees, there are homes. The broken path are at the bottom of the screen with the front door to my home three hundred and fourteen feet away from this field. And next slide, please. I guess he's going to repeat, yeah. So some people think Guile Road is a dead end, but it's not. The field's a short walk from a great neighborhood, crossing over the Pine Tree Brook. This is how we get to Lower Guile. So here again, you can see how close this is to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So we're also concerned about the health of the brook, which is an important part of our neighborhood. The wetlands that are connected to the brook aren't just nearby. They are directly adjacent to the field within a hundred feet and they run into the brook. The brook is part of the Napanset River watershed and it joins in a pond upstream at the Walter Baker Chocolate Factory. The Napanset at that junction is an EPA superfund site. And the Pine Tree Brook also runs closely alongside Turner's Pond, so any chemical contamination to the brook could leach into the pond.
Were neighbors aware that a field with such great impact was proposed? No. The community at large was unaware of the plan until the town meeting vote June sixth. It was called Lower Guile Reconstruction on the warrant. It said nothing of artificial turf, lights, sound system, press box, seating for hundreds. The Parks Commission began work on this project in 2019, did site studies in 2021, secured financial okays by March 2022. Still, no notice to neighbors. According to a review of Parks Department minutes in March and April of this year, the board discussed how to answer community concerns, though neither announced the plan nor invited comment. Our neighbors have been scrambling to figure out how to voice our concerns about this field. We're told it's too late, but it shouldn't be. We want to give an erring to major issues regarding this project. Will artificial turf save the town money? Artificial turf does not bring cost savings. Cost of installation and maintenance is not cheaper than natural gas or grass over a sixteen-year cycle. Plastic turf is not recyclable, despite claims to the contrary. Maintenance and overall cost of artificial turf and natural gas are about the same over the life of a field. Just to remind, artificial turf needs to be replaced every eight to ten years, requires replacing the infill, regrading, et cetera. The artificial turf needs to be cleaned and disinfected to protect the athletes. The upkeep is necessary to keep the field from wearing out too quickly. Water is needed to reduce temperature on hot days and the surface needs testing to protect against concussion. And the claim that the carpet is recyclable, this is false. There are no facilities to recycle artificial turf in the United States. Used carpets and other components sit in landfills. It's expensive to dispose of a used carpet and backing. The real cost is to the environment. Artificial turf is not maintenance-free. Above, a Brockville artificial turf field fails after a rainstorm at Walt Whitman High School in Bethesda last month. This is the field that's proposed for our field. What's wrong with another plastic football field? Artificial turf is toxic. A new plastic field poses risks for the community, for the nearby wetlands, for the Pine Tree Brook and for our town's athletes. All plastic, grass, carpets, shock pads and infills have PFAS, according to testing of products, including the proposed Wood Brockville infill. None are certified organic. Calling them organic is inaccurate and greenwashing. Does all artificial turf have PFAS? Yes. The plastic grass blades and backing contain toxic chemicals called PFAS. Brockville, the infill proposed for our field, was found to have PFAS when tested by Martha's Vineyard. Among the concerns about how close the wetlands and brook are to the field are the proven presence of PFAS in the actual carpet. New EPA reporting July 2022 says PFAS are unsafe at any level. These chemical bonds loosen with heat and friction and wash into the fill underneath and through the drainage pipes and go directly into the brook. Bits of the grass break off and contribute to microplastic pollution. PFAS are called forever chemicals and there are health impacts on. PFAS are called forever chemicals, and there are health impacts on interquins system, connection to cancer, among many other concerns. Artificial turf can be very hot. Surface temperatures reported at the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood. You see, the air temperature was 79 and Piattelli turf field was 144 on June 29th. Donovan grass field was 83, and the road temperature was 129. These are two examples that I measured this summer. I have many other examples. So what does the surface, so why do we care if the surface of the artificial turf is very hot? The surface temperature can be dangerous to players. Burlington schools close their fields when the temperature registers 120. This is on their website. And they send the athletes to grass fields. The field will also produce a heat island for the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood, potentially raising temperature around the wetland and the surrounding neighborhood. It's an environmental justice issue and an equity issue. Now imagine hosing down the field to cool it for play, or a summer cloud coming along and drenching the hot surface hotter than the road, leaching PFAS into the water. All that hot water will drain directly into the brook and wetland. You saw how close the wetland is to the field. Huntress claims the wood infill reduces temperature by 33 degrees, but research says it's closer to 6 degrees, and some none at all. Is artificial turf safer for athletes?
A major selling point of products has been the important safety of turf. And we asked the question, is artificial turf safer for athletes? And the answer actually is no. So let's start with a consideration of concussion. The manufacturer of Brock USA claims a turf field, quote, with shock pad can expect up to a 50% reduction in common head injuries associated with head to field impact. That's a stunning claim, and one not representing anything like the science of this consensus. In fact, the line chair of the research we found suggests just the opposite, that rates of concussion were actually higher on turf fields. But looked at overall, the picture is far more complex and has a number of different variables. But the one thing that emerged, that clearly emerged was that turf was not unquestionably safe. In fact, a 2015 white paper by the Concussion Legacy Foundation, based here in Boston, because so much of the work done at Boston University.
We've lost the speaker.
Paul, we can't hear you.
Kate, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Now we can't. You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. In, okay, the, hang on just one second.
Okay, I think we, we left off with our good friends at the Concussion Legacy Foundation, and we're gonna return to them because they look lonely. Said that exceptionally well-maintained artificial turf can perform similarly to natural turf, end quote, in terms of incidents of concussion. And the website of Brock USA, manufacturer of the shock pad that we're talking about using here, notes that its goal is to reach, quote, "player standard safe, player safety ranges found in natural grass." A tacit acknowledgement that grass is in fact the gold standard. What about injuries to lower extremities? Are the rates of these injuries higher on turf? And the answer is yes. While concussions about concussion remain somewhat in the air, there's a general agreement that there is a higher incidence of injuries to knees, ankles, and feet. And it is in fact the reason why grass is the clear preference of professional players in a variety of sports. In football, the NFL Players Association recently requested that all teams convert fields to grass due to increased lower extremity injuries on plastic turf. FIFA is requiring all 2026 World Cup host stadiums to have grass fields. And in baseball, only five of 30 Major League Baseball stadiums have turf. It kind of speaks for itself that Major League Baseball, which was an early adopter of turf with the first field being there in the Houston Astrodome in 1966, and now here we are more than a half century later, and only five of the 30 Major League ballparks have turf fields.
So what's a good solution? Can a grass field be used for as many hours as an artificial field? Yes. We won't have to sacrifice playing time if we do it right. Through organic design and management, Marblehead has proved that a full-size grass football field compacted for years can be transformed into a high-quality field even with 1,800-plus hours of yearly use. That's almost as many yearly hours as an artificial field. The town of Sharon is also using good natural grass management to maximize playtime. A new Lower Guile field will also have thousands of hours of yearly use. And due to a new drainage system, it will likely remain in good condition as well. How many playing days per year will be lost if we use natural grass for the field? Very few. If the proposed Lower Guile field is reconstructed and maintained well, it will likely only be closed on the days when it's actually raining. Well-designed new grass fields have advanced drainage systems to prevent puddling and extensive mud formation, and can reopen after the rain stops. We might also want to ask, how many playing days will be lost due to extreme heat, which will occur much more frequently on artificial turf? Let's join our peer towns of Sharon, Concord, Wayland, and others in embracing thoughtful development of grass playing fields. And this last picture is a sad reminder of what we'll be losing when the field is carpeted with plastic. Let's go with real grass for Guile Field. Thank you.
I would just like to add, I don't see a chat function in here, which I had planned on just sending this to you quickly, but I'll be sure to email to all of the board members a statement from the NAACP expressing their concerns over a similar project in Malden and that addresses the environmental justice issue, as well as a letter from the pediatricians at the Children's Environmental Health Center from at Mount Sinai dated last year about their concerns over the chemicals in these fields.
Well, thank you, Kate, Catherine, Paul, and Liz. We appreciate your being here and your presentation. And at this time, we would like to open the floor to discussion by members of the select board. Any questions that they may have of you or Kevin or Chris? Ms. Vasta, you're recognized.
Hi, thank you. I first want to thank the residents for their presentation. I thought it was very thorough and very thoughtful. I do have a couple of questions for Kevin that I wrote down here. In terms of the outreach to the neighborhood, it sounded like there was one community meeting, and then it's on the agenda every time that you meet. Is that what I'm hearing? Because it sounds like it would be nice to have had some more meetings that were directly community involvement in. That would be my first question. My second point would be, I'm very familiar with these fields. I have two sons played baseball. We played on that lower field Donovan all the time in Piattelli. I'm curious to what, curious as to whatever you end up doing with this field. You're gonna have to go over this field, whether it's grass or turf or whatever, to end up working on Donovan, which you're gonna have to do at some point because it's loaded with, it's really wet, it's a wet field. So I'm sort of curious as to why, or if there was a process to sort of look at doing something with both those fields at the same time. I'm worried about anything that you do with this field with the water runoff going on to Donovan. And I have a few other questions, but if we could start with those, appreciate that. Thank you.
We did have a couple of Zoom meetings with Mr. Huntress and a couple of the neighbors of that neighborhood prior to that. Not everyone was known about it. This was all still new to everyone, so that's how it started at first. The point with Donovan, you have a, you have a turf field up top, I thought. Why not have a turf and a grass field for baseball? Not everyone has turf baseball field, so you kind of have to learn to play on both.
Ms. Vasta?
Thank you. So my point was more about Donovan itself. Keeping it a grass field, how would you, I guess my question is if you're looking at doing the football field in front of it as well, you're gonna have to do something with Donovan at some point. That's my point. So I'm not talking about Piattelli at all. I know that's already been done and so forth. But I'm just saying, if we do something with this field here where it's either grass or turf or whatever, you're still gonna have to do something and access Donovan. That's my first question. And second of all, I would like to hear from the manufacturer a little bit about this PFAS with the product that's going to be used. And also, how would you monitor if there's any leakage of that, which, around the field into the neighborhood or the stream? Thank you.
Kevin and Chris, any response to that? Chris, you did.
I'd be happy to address that if it's the pleasure of the board. You're right to question PFAS, PFAS, and the many chemicals that are controlled by mass DEP with regard to synthetic turf. They are forever chemicals, and they, they are present at some, at some levels in turf products, but they're, they're really present in everything. And I don't mean to make light of any of the discussions tonight. They're all good. But all these levels are measured in parts per trillion. And I would ask you if you're gonna get involved in this discussion of PFAS. There's quite a bit of science out there. We were involved with a project on the vineyard that spent over $50,000 in, in testing of both synthetic turf products and native topsoil fields for presence of PFAS. And I'd be happy to share that information with you. There's a lot of it, so I'm not gonna get into the details of it tonight. But I can tell you that PFAS was found at significantly higher levels in native grass fields in the topsoil themselves because it's airborne. It's been in our environment for probably over 50 years and, and has found its way in the topsoil throughout. But there's lots of good science there, and, and you're right to ask the questions, so I appreciate that. But in a turf field, the PFAS chemicals that are found, although they're very, very low, are encapsulated. Unlike in a native grass field where they're, they're more mobile, they're in topsoil, so they're bioavailable, if you will, and they will move through. But again, I'm happy to share that research with you. I see some folks nodding their heads no, but, but the science is out there. And it's, I tell you what, what you might be interested in doing then is hiring your own toxicologist, third-party independent toxicologist to really help you understand the sciences out there, because there's quite a bit of it. And we could certainly put you in touch or recommend toxicologists or how you might find one. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Ms. Vasta, back to you, and then I think we have another hand raised. Yeah, Ms. Vasta.
Thank you. Just part of my original question, which was, if there's any kind of runoff from this type of field, are there any, around the field, are there gonna be any kind of monitoring stations or anything that would, would be able to measure any of the levels coming off of the field?
You certainly could install monitoring wells, down gradient of the field itself. And there'll be a significant subsurface drainage system, whether this is natural grass or synthetic turf, that would be, that we'd be able to tie into to catch not only the groundwater, but the, the stormwater as it moves through the system as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Actually, you know, I thank Mr. Huntress for being here, and actually, we, we started, we've been starting to dig.
Is this while speaking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we've been digging into the science too, and you're right, there's a lot of it. It's very complex, and much of it is sort of conflicting. I think that I would point out, so the concern over PFAS, particularly in these turf surfaces, has really been growing in the last, I would say, probably five to eight, 10 years. And partly because we've known about PFAS for a long time. People have known about them, and, and Mr. Huntress is right that, that it's around, it's in a lot of products and whatnot. But the concern has been growing, and particularly around these, these turf fields, because they're proliferating so much. And because there's so much that we don't know about them, the EPA is growing more and more concerned. They put out some advisories in July. They're going to put out some new rules, drinking water rules that are coming, I believe, in either September or October. And those are basically, those advisories are basically gonna say that, that, that pretty much any level's unsafe. There's some problems with even, and Mr. Huntress is right, they find them in, in really relatively low levels, at least in Martha's Vineyard. And, and I would point out, I don't know if you guys caught this or not, but Martha's Vineyard, because of those levels, Martha's Vineyard decided to discontinue its, its, its plans for right now. They're not, they're not continuing.
That's not true.
That is true. There, there's not been any decision to continue in Martha's Vineyard.
We're the, we're the project architect for the project. The owner is moving forward. So we, we can debate that.
Mr. Huntress, when you say the owner, are you talking about the, the Board of Education? Or are you talking about the planning board? Are you talking about oak bluffs? Or are you talking, because there is, I, I apologize, but there, there is this.
I, I want to moderate this a little bit. Maybe the dialogue could continue offline. I really want to open this up for board members, questions and answers. I appreciate the comments. Ms. Bradley, you were recognized, and then Ms. Simpson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. If I can, through you, I would like to ask Mr. Huntress to please send me that, the articles from the studies on Martha's Vineyard. I'm really interested in what you just said.
Happy to.
And I want to make sure that I get that information, so I appreciate that. As somebody who has served on the warrant committee for the last five years, I can tell you that this specific project has been brought to our attention for multiple years. I can tell you that it has been on our agendas. I can tell you that it has been discussed by many people in the public regarding the turf down here. So it's not coming out of the blue. I would just like to say that I've known about this for at least four years now, maybe three. I, I mean, I'm, I'm getting old, so time's weird. But it's three or four years that I've known about this project happening. I'm also a resident in, in Precinct Four. I also abut the, the brook. I'm looking at it right over there. So I can tell you that for me, I was made absolutely aware of this by, by the Parks and Recs Department many years ago. So those were the two quickies on this. And then I, I have one more question, if it was okay, Mr. Chair, to ask Mr. Huntress. Thank you. So recently, there was private turf field that was put in, in that same area. It was not approved by any boards. It was not sanctioned. I don't even know what it is. I don't know P-whatever. But whatever it is, is there a way to determine if there's runoff, if it's from that private project? Or if it would be from our public project? Is there a way to determine the difference between the two turf fields?
I'm not aware of what synthetic turf project you're speaking of. Is it, is it in Milton? Is that what you're referring to?
Yep. So it's the Piattelli field up top. It's the, the Little League field. Yep. So it's the Piattelli field up top, it's the Little League field up top, that was a privately funded, I really don't even know what the.
You're talking about on the campus, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Yes.
Something else. Yep, we could certainly isolate stormwater from one or both fields and tell you exactly what's, and have them tested for whatever you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you. Because I really think that there is a difference here, and I really think that that's an important piece, is that that was done through private fundraising. Not that I'm opposed to it, I mean, to each his own, but I don't want the town to be held up because of something that was done privately. So thank you for that. I really appreciate your expertise.
My pleasure.
Ms. Simpson, do you have something behind your presentation you wish to?
Yeah, I would just like to quickly reiterate what Paul said about the government regulations coming out, saying there are no safe levels of PFAS, none. And that it is irresponsible to consider adding more PFAS anywhere, like in this field. And it doesn't matter if it's coming from Piattelli down, why add more Piattelli guile into the Brook? There's also the additional concern about the heat of the water that will come off a hot field and change the temperature of the wetlands in the Brook, which will kill wildlife that is currently in there. And we have these really special trout that swim in there. And I'd be happy to post all that information to our Grass for Guile Facebook page. But also, so, and the heat island effect that will damage those wetlands. We really need to think about protecting the environment as well. PFAS is a part of it, but it's not the entire thing. But it's a huge concern where it's chemicals that are gonna leach into my backyard.
Thank you. And Mr. Zulus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will state the obvious in that it appears from the discussion here that there is agreement among all parties that lower guile should be reconstructed. And that the only disagreement is what the turf should be. Should it be natural grass or should it be turf? And that it appears also that both sides agree that there is differing science on this and differing, maybe perhaps evolving science on this. And so I guess I would encourage the Parks Department and Mr. Huntress and the neighborhood to open the lines of communication so that we can try to get some consensus on, we do have consensus that it should be reconstructed. But it sounds like there should be some more sharing of information back and forth about what is intended in terms of the artificial turf, and then how that is better than, in the view of some, better than the, better than the natural, the natural grass.
Ms. Musto, you are recognized. You are muted, Roxanne.
Thank you. I also was wondering what the maintenance is like on this type of field cost-wise. And I think it would be beneficial to have, hold another type of a meeting with the neighbors and Mr. Huntress and the Parks Department to just sort of hash through a few things and see if there can be some kind of consensus and compromises that could work. Thank you.
I think we have a strong recommendation on the table to be pursued, a nice outcome from this dialogue before we move on to our next agenda items. I want to thank everybody for their willingness to participate in this valuable discussion. Ms. Musto?
I just wanted to see if they had a quick answer for my question on the maintenance costs of this type of a field before we go.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, would you like me to take that, or would you prefer to answer that?
Thank you.
So maintenance of a synthetic turf field is actually much easier than natural grass field. It costs about $7,500 a year. You can do that either with in-house staff, or you can do it through a third-party maintenance agreement. But that is one of the benefits of synthetic turf, is that it's much easier to maintain. I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like.
And I think that might be something.
Good, another time.
I think an external discussion along with additional conversation on the topic has been recommended. So with that, the Chair wants to, again, thank everybody for their contributions to this discussion. And we will look forward to hearing whether or not further dialogue takes place and what the outcome of that dialogue might be. At this time, the Chair will turn to Agenda Item Number 19, Discussion Approval, Institutional Network Request for Proposal Consultant Contract with Entry Point Networks. Mr. Zulus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in the spring, the board appropriated $5,000 of the money that has been appropriated for the INET project to be used for consultant so that we get the RFP right. It's a very technical requirement to get the RFP right, and the Municipal Broadband Committee recommended that appropriation, the Select Board approved it. Since then, we have been seeking out that consultant. We had one, but for personal reasons, he had to step back. We had a second who did not want to sign our standard town contract. So now we have a third that we're recommending from from, recommendation from the Municipal Broadband Committee. And as a consultant for the RFP, it is a firm known as Entry Point Networks. And we met with the principals of that, Jeff Christensen, the Broadband Committee, met with the principals of that, Jeff Christensen and Bruce Patterson. And Entry Point Networks is working with several other communities in the area, including Quincy, on their broadband project, so they certainly have the expertise. So the Broadband Committee recommends that we approve a consulting contract with Entry Point Networks. And so that's what I'm seeking approval for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Any questions or comments for Mr. Zulus on this matter, please? I see none. There is a motion to be made, Mr. Zulus?
I'll move to approve the Institutional Network request for proposal consultant contract between Entry Point Networks and the town of Milton for the amount of $5,000, up to $5,000. May not be that full amount, but up to $5,000.
To $5,000, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. We turn to Title Number 20 on the agenda, Committee Appointments, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, One-Year Term. This is a continuation from a discussion of a couple of weeks ago. We have background information on the nominee, and I checked, and there have been no other people who have volunteered to serve in the position that remains open on the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. I just want to say that I know that I have taken a hard-line stance on moving forward residents on committees without a process that's equitable being in place. I was lucky enough by you to be appointed with Member Musto to the Select Board Subcommittee on Boards and Committees. And I have to say, we had our first meeting, and I was really, I was really happy, and I really felt like there was a way that this would work, and so it's more equitable. And I was encouraged by Member Musto's determination and her comments and her willingness to roll up her sleeves and make this happen. So I want to say that I've had a lot of conversations with folks, and one thing that I realized is that these appointments are only for a year, and if some of the suggestions that we talked about at the meeting actually come to fruition, there will be reappointments that will need to happen in July if the Select Board agrees with what the Subcommittee comes up with. So I just want to say that I've done a lot of thinking on this, and I'm ready to take a vote this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, and I want to thank you and Ms. Musto for the work that you are doing with respect to the voluntary applications from the committees. I think we'll have a very fruitful outcome that will make significant improvements to the structure, to the community, and to all of the citizens who are involved or want to be or should be involved. So my compliments to you, great start. Is there a motion to appoint Susan Phillips to the Animal Shelter?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second, please?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. It's moved and seconded. I see no signal for discussion. Mr. Zulus, by roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
I'm going across the screen.
I vote yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle. Yes. Every once in a while, a screen can confuse itself, so your pattern of asking gets thrown out. Thank you very much, and congratulation to Susan Phillips. Next item is the Town Administrator's Report. A town administrator is on vacation this week. We wish her and her family an enjoyable break. And one of the things that she has conveyed is her interest that she will continue for further discussion at another meeting of the Select Board is the possibility of establishing a solicitation policy and a fee schedule for solicitation licenses, or whatever the appropriate term might be. She has discussed this with me, and I was a willing listener because it has been something that has been frequently occurring in my neighborhood, on my street. And I think this is something that should be looked at in consultation with the appropriate offices within the town. I will not belabor that any further, and we will wait for discussion when she is with us again. I have under the Chair's report two to make. The grateful one is in response to inquiries about whether or not we have a traffic officer in our areas to govern parking and so on down the line. I know I'm not using the right term at this particular time. But I want to make sure that everybody knows that that person has been in position in the town. There was such a person before the pandemic, the position was vacated, page during the pandemic. And it's about two years ago that the reappointment was made. That's good, you're muted. Great. And the formal position designation is?
Oh, I don't, oh, I don't have a name.
No, not the person, but the position.
Oh, I'm sorry. The.
Right, me too.
I know, right?
My tongue.
Sorry, it's late for me. I can't remember now. I can't, it's just escaped my mind.
That's allowable.
Sorry.
We have that person in place, and it is working. I saw him in East Milton Square just earlier today, as a matter of fact. Well, late yesterday, they do run together. The other item that I wanted to report on was a meeting that took place with Congresswoman Presley last Wednesday with the Town Administrator Fagan and myself. As we might recall, there's been redistricting due to the 2020 census, a census that proved that Milton has had its population grow, and there's been a shifting in the congressional districts in Milton. The Southern Congressional District, which is Congresswoman Presley's district, includes precincts 1, 2, 4, 8, 5, and 10 with a total population of just over 12,000 residents, and the Eighth Congressional District, Congressman Lynch, precincts 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, with a total population of 16, just over 16,000 represented. The conversation was scheduled for approximately an hour, and two and a half hours later, it concluded. I want to mention that the Congresswoman is on the task force on Aging in Families, serving as Vice Chair of the House Democratic Caucus Task Force on Aging in Families. She has a very focused interest on the multiple effects of the pandemic, including the long-term, complex implications for societies' whole, and particularly children, family structures, and learning. She has an interest in federal support for the reinforcement of Milton's needs for highway improvement under state jurisdiction, including Routes 28 and 138. She's understanding of the town's traffic environment and the need for timely resolution in priority areas related to public safety. The Congresswoman Presley expressed her desire to identify opportunities for involvement in support of the community. She wants to be engaged with us as well as for us. The work of the Council on Aging was of significant interest, and we will follow up with Christine Stanton. The ongoing airplane impact issue that continues and related continuing efforts were of interest. She's somewhat familiar with the efforts involving Congressman Lynch, and was encouraging a continued advocacy on behalf of Milton's interests, as well as her being kept informed on this important matter. Opera funding was of high interest to the Congresswoman. She was very pleased with the assertive approach, the aggressive approach taken by Milton, including the application process for local businesses. And she expressed the desire for an update in Milton's opera fund's allocations today. She would like Milton to tell its opera story. Climate impact was another interest. Discussion included the coastal areas, the Neponset, and the Granite Avenue, Neponset River intersect in particular. She's very interested in ways in which grants and available means might be pursued to mitigate the advancing waters that we're experiencing, will continue to experience based upon data like that, which the Conservation Commissioner, Tom Palmer, presented last night during the Conservation Commission meeting. Affordable housing in Milton was on her agenda in general, as well as, in conjunction with the town's population increase, the options available for older citizens, seeking to downsize and remain in the community of our interests, who are in the overwhelming effects limited affordable housing has on the workforce in relation to their and economic health of Massachusetts, with a particular interest on the younger populations. Congressman Presley was very interested in school enrollment, population trends, and the resulting need to resolve related building needs. Excuse me, issues associated with student and parent college loan indebtedness was also on her agenda. So I thank you for that. I just wanted to report out on that meeting with a member of the US Congress office to meet with us. I think it's important to share, not only with the Select Board, but with the members of the community which inspired during such a discussion. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Yes, Ms. Apolito?
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, you were referring to the parking enforcement officer?
Parking. Thank you.
It was gonna make me, and then his name is Aiden.
He wouldn't have slept tonight.
Right, exactly. And he started in July.
Both of us, you. Appreciate that very much. I have no responses at this time for public comment unless somebody wishes to do so. Yes, Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to correct the Subcommittee's name that Member Musto and I have been appointed to. It is not the Committee on Diversity and Equity. That is a completely separate committee. We have been appointed to review the process of volunteer appointments to boards and committees, so I just wanted that to be correct for the record.
I thank you for doing that, Ms. Bradley, because I noticed somewhere in the press or the media that that had been picked up, and it does not. It it does not represent uh, the purpose of of committee on which uh, you and Ms. Musto serve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. Number twenty-four is our future meeting dates, uh, Tuesday, August twenty-third. It's been cited numerous times during the meeting.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Zulus raised his hand.
Mr. Zulus, I didn't see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I I do think it's important to just address very briefly. Uh, these claims about blackballing and cronyism and, you know, it's easy to make wild accusations and exaggerated claims. Without having any any facts behind them, and and that's fine. People can do it. The public comment, they can come and say whatever they want, but I think it's fair for us to say. Um, uh, you know, there's 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 no. Uh, I'm I'm not aware of any basis for any of those claims of blackballing and crony- cronyism and if there is. Uh, then we'll take care of it, but uh, to just make the bald allegations doesn't really help anyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. I appreciate that. We have a a Liza O'Rourke with a hand raised. Uh, Liz, this is pertaining to the previous. Uh, topic from which we have moved on.
Um, well, I I did want to make a public comment.
Uh, that period has passed in the meeting and you're very welcome to do so at the next meeting we have, uh. We welcome you to doing so and you gave a very nice presentation, so please return. Our next public comment will be on uh, the Select Board Meeting of August twenty-third.
Okay, I guess I didn't get my hand up quick enough.
But don't, don't miss that opportunity. Future meeting dates, uh, we mentioned Tuesday, August twenty-third, uh, Wednesday, September seventh, the day after. Uh, primary elections, September twentieth. And then going into October, we have October uh, four, which is a Tuesday, and October eighteen, which is a Tuesday. And Lynn, if I I might ask, um, would you be willing to uh, work on the development of an out calendar? So that we can see on one page uh, what all of the perspective. Uh, Select Board Meeting Dates are throughout the year. Take us, uh, if you would, up to June thirtieth.
I will do that. I'll work on it for you.
Thank you very kindly. Ms. Musto, you are recognized.
Thank you. Um, for the October dates, can we wait on those? I think one of them might be a Jewish holiday, actually. It might be Yom Kippur, which is a very holy day, so I don't know if it, we'd have to look at that. I don't have that in front of me.
Please, we'll definitely take a look into that. Lynn, do you have that?
Yes, she's right. October fourth is Yom Kippur.
Oh, okay.
But we could do. The fifth. I just won't be there. I don't think. Could we look at that next time, perhaps?
Yeah, we have a little bit of time. Um, uh, let's do so for our, I will put it on the agenda, of course. Uh, for our August twenty-third meeting. Thank you for paying that for our attention.
Thank you.
We have a uh. Series of minutes and a proposed motion to approve the minutes of May eighteen, June one, June twenty-nine. Uh, June, July thirteen, and July twenty-one. Um, I did not see any substantive. Uh, errors or have uh, recommendations for significant change, did anyone else? Mr. Zulus?
I have a few minutes, uh, Mr. Chair, but just, you know, some things that were a little bit repositioned or. Um, uh, but but nothing, nothing really substantive. There was. Um, you know, a couple of corrections on um. On some language, on appropriation with respect to the um, the ARPA appropriation.
I wanted to love that. Thank you for catching that.
Well, a few of those uh, things, but nothing, you know, I I can get the changes to um, I can get the changes to. To Lynn. There there was um. And then a couple of times, um, if a member speaks on, s- s- speaking on behalf of the town of Milton, I, you know, I don't know if we want to. I don't know if that's. I don't know if they speak on behalf of the town of Milton or on behalf of, if it's not you, that may be something, you know, that we might want to think about, so. Here and there. But I I'm prepared, if you, you know, and I can send the, again, I can send the, I can send the the uh, the markup to Lana.
That would be most appreciated, and I have a couple of annotations too that I will get to as well. Is there a motion on the minutes, please?
I'll I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of May eighteen, June first, June twenty-ninth, July thirteenth, and July twenty-first. Uh, substantially in the form provided, subject to ministerial amendments.
Are you a second? A second for Ms. Musto? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. And at the this time, we will uh, move into executive session. Uh, this will be uh, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts laws. Chapter thirty-eight, uh, paragraph twenty-one, uh, section A subsection three, discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts. Space Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the conditions of the stairs at the MBTA station. Located at Adam Street, Milton, Massachusetts. Motion is as follows, I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy. Against the Massachusetts Space Transit Authority, MBTA. Related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. Based upon my belief that discussion in this matter in open session. May have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the Select Board. The Select Board uh, will adjourn from executive session. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. And Lynn, can you uh, now arrange to? Uh, have the recording. Uh, ended with. M A T V assistance and to lock the room.